Let's move to the roll call at this point.
Mr. Alt.
Here.
Mr. Beistel.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Here.
Dr. Feig.
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
There are nine board members present. Citizen comments, any comments today?
I have no comment cards, however, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce and welcome our interim business manager, Mr. Bill McNamee. Bill's been on board with us for about two weeks now and has been a rather busy boy, so we're happy to have him filling in for us until such time as we can get that position filled. So Bill officially welcome to board.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good. Get to busy here, first evening here with a budget meeting here in a little bit. Good. Tax collector rates, let's look at that.
At this time, I would like to make a motion that if we discuss this, I've provided some very, very detailed information to the full board, and I would recommend that we consider this information before any actions taken.
All right, Dr. Feig, we're going to have a recommended motion, so I'm going to use it in that order, and then at the point of discussion you will be...
I'm not finished yet.
We will call on you at the point at which we...
We have, please, we have two more...
Thank you very much. We have a recommendation here, and I'm going to call for that at the present time.
Two more meetings.
Thank you very much. You will have time for discussion. Dr. Molnar, go ahead with the recommendation.
It is recommended that the board set the tax collection fee for occupation privileged taxes at three cents for every five dollars collected in the municipality within the school district, and set the annual real estate tax collector remuneration as follows. For East Huntington Township, for the 2013-14 school year, $30,921. For Scottsdale, $25,446. For Upper Tyrone Township, $15,270. And for Everson, $10,481. Those are the recommendations for 2014. We're recommending that those rates remain the same for 2014-15, and then at 2% increments moving out thereafter. This fee structure is based upon the understanding that there will neither be deduction from tax collector compensation or contribution by the school district to the Pennsylvania new school employees retirement system.
What's the motion?
The motion is made by Mr. Benz, and I think I heard it second by several tickle. I'm going to pick out Ms. Kaufman.
Question on the motion, the persecution.
Okay.
To go across in Scottsdale, it looks like the 2015-16 actually goes down in price?
That would be a misprint. It should be a 2% increase. Thank you, Mr. Kukic.
Make a note, which one is that again?
Scottsdale.
Scottsdale.
For 15-16.
15-16. So it should be 25,954, right?
Right.
Instead of 24, 25.
Should be 25, what?
954.
Okay. Any other questions for clarification? Are you going to have Ms. Riggs on?
Yeah, I've invited Ms. Diane Feig, one of our tax collectors, to join us. At the last meeting, there were several questions posed, so Mrs. Feig, if you would approach the podium and perhaps be able to entertain any questions that the board may have at this time.
Good.
She's here to answer questions.
Yeah, she doesn't have a, you don't have a presentation?
No, I do.
So you're ready to respond to questions at this point?
Yes.
There were questions that I could not answer, so I asked Mrs. Feig.
Good, good, good. All right, let's open it here for questions. Go ahead, Dr. Feig.
I've spent about three days researching this issue because it's presented to us. This is the second part of time. So what I did is I talked with the tax office in the Westmoreland County Courthouse. I talked to the tax office in the Fayette County Courthouse. I talked to the commissioner's office in Fayette County. I talked to the supervisor's office in East Huntington Township. I reviewed documents given to us by the administration. I contacted the business office to make sure my data on social security was correct. I used the budget data that was given to us, and I discussed this with the county controller and the head of the penalty department for Westmoreland County. And what I discovered, and the way I did this, the way I did it, is we have four tax collectors for one school district. They are divided into East Huntington, Scottsdale, Everson, and Upper Tyrone. The tax collector in East Huntington sends out 38% of our bills. The tax collector in Scottsdale sends out 30, East Huntington, Scottsdale's 30%, Everson is 13%, and Upper Tyrone is 19%. Two of our tax collectors reside in Fayette County. The way I calculated what it is presently costing us is you take the salary, and I just used the first year, you take the salary, plus we pay social security, plus there's a weighted percentage of the costs. We pay supplies, postage, bonding, social security, okay, all that, and you add that up, it's weighted out. In other words, the tax collector in Everson does not get as much as the tax collector in East Huntington. So directly from the tax offices themselves, and at first, I thought that when you were a tax collector, you compiled the bills, like you sat and you looked at the assessment and you calculated it, and you printed the bill. Well, I found out that that's not the case. All bills are, our bills are produced, totally produced by the county. They, actually, they contracted the company that comes in and goes through the real estate information and calculates the bill. They print the bill, put them in a box, and they're either delivered or picked up by the tax collectors. So for East Huntington, there are 4,304 bills. These are the fall taxes, these are the school taxes. For Scottsdale, there's 2,091 bills. For Everson, there's 392 bills, and for Upper Tyrone, there's 1,235 bills. I originally started out using Mr. Petonick's demographic information, but I discovered that the number of housing units they had listed there is different from the actual bills. This is what they told me, they put in a box, put in a tax collector. They then get these bills and mail them, and Mr. Dr. Molnar said we pay the postage. So when you add up all of these costs, it is costing, this is what it is costing, now there's a difference between salary and cost. Salary is one portion of the cost, the rest of it is added in. So, I'll also go from the bottom up. For Upper Tyrone, for every bill that is mailed, it costs us $14.78. In Everson, it costs us $31.94 for each bill that is mailed. In Scottsdale, it's $14.45 for each bill that is mailed. And Diane, you come in the best, you are our best deal, at 8.57 for each bill that is filed, each bill that is sent out for the fall taxes. This is information from the tax bureau, the commissioners, and so forth. In addition to that, those are the fall taxes, those are the school taxes. Then in the spring, there are taxes, and I believe they call them municipal taxes or local taxes or something like that. We have two entities in our school district that are in Fayette County and two that are in Westmoreland County. If you look at the third page, you will see where the Fayette County Commissioners set the rate at $2.20 per bill for every bill that they send out, and then they get 5 cents for every capita bill. Tax collectors pay their own rent, utilities, purchases, and supplies, and have no benefits. In the next article, you will see that Scott, that Scottsdale Borough posted the tax collection salary at $13,000 a year for '14, '15, '16, and '17, for the next four years. So the way that they collect local taxes is a little different. In Upper Tyrone and Everson, they get $2.20 per bill, and the woman in the commissioner's office said they give them 23 cents for postage, which is half of the, I guess, the going rate, and then they get 5 cents for LST, which I understand stands for local service taxes. So for that, they get $881, and then 2,778.75. In Scottsdale, that salary is set at $13,000, which comes out to 6.46 a bill. Diane does it a little differently. She, she really gives them a wonderful service. She only gets $2.96 for a bill. She doesn't get a salary. She gets 3% of the local service taxes, that was $130,754, and 5% of the property taxes, which is 1.767.6. So right now, if you look at the top of the page, if you put it all together, every school tax we collect costs us $17.44. Every fall tax, every school tax we collect is 17.44. The spring taxes are $3.44. This motion that you have just made recommends a raise, a raise. I don't know if any of you have a problem, but paying $32 for each letter in Everson and $15 is over. Like I said, Diane, Diane does the, does the most for the least amount of money, okay? I'm asking you not to vote on this. I'm asking you to take this home, look at it, make your own phone calls, do your own research. We have two more meetings. You don't have to do this, but two more meetings. But if we're going to talk about the budget, and this is my concern, and I told Dr. Molnar, you're going to talk about the budget, and you lock yourself into something here before you talk about the budget, it's no longer a part of the budget discussion. I'm, I'm saying that we're here tonight to talk about the budget. I'm asking that you go home. I have had this checked by three different people. I've done everything I knew how to make sure it's accurate. I got information strictly from the authorities. I took nothing on, on just, you know, suggestion or recommendation. So I'm asking that you consider looking at this, studying it, and then when we come back, there are a number of actions that we can take. I have three scenarios here that range from saving us, 76,000, on the 77,000, down to 70,000. If we continue to pay at the current rate, we're going to, you're going to lose money, you're going to continue, this is four years, now you're, you're going, four years ahead. I'm asking you to consider studying this. I've put a lot of work into it. I, we have no need to vote on it, and I'm asking you, as responsible people, for the taxpayers that we represent, at least look at what I've done. Find the mistakes if you can, do whatever you want. I'm asking you to please consider what you're doing today.
I'd like to make just a few comments. Between the four school districts, or four tax collectors, we collected in 2012, $7,666,653.61. That's pretty substantial. Our fee was, just the salaries, was $78,959. It came out to 1.0299%. Burkheimer, and I don't know who all is aware of this, but I am the delegate for Southmoreland School District, East Huntington Township, and Everson Borough, and every month, I'm also the treasurer on the board, which is where Westmoreland County appointed Burkheimer as our tax collector. As the treasurer, I'm responsible for pulling together all financial statistics for every school district and municipality in Westmoreland County. Southmoreland, in the year 2010-2011, collected $926,899 in earned income tax, of which we paid 5% to Burkheimer, which was $46,344.95. Now, I don't have that as a verified number, I'm just telling you based upon me being on this committee, and when we paid 5%, that's how much we paid Burkheimer for $900,000. Now, because we've went countywide, we've dropped that rate to 2.5%, but we're still paying 2.5%, so we should be anticipating to pay them around $23,172.48. In addition to what we collect and Burkheimer collects, we have sent up delinquent for 2012 to Westmoreland County and Fayette County Tax Claim bureaus, $750,369.46. Westmoreland County gets 5% of our money. So that 5% comes to $37,518.47. They collect 1/10th of what we, the four elected tax collectors, collect. They will collect 750,000, we collect 7 million dollars. They're getting half of what we're getting, so I don't really think that we're being unfairly paid for what we're collecting. In addition, what I just found out yesterday, it used to be in Westmoreland County, when you sent a bill up delinquent, they charged the taxpayers $15 for a delinquent bill. Now they're charging the taxpayers $15 per type of bill. So if you go delinquent, county, township, or municipal, and school, you're now being charged $45. I submitted 561 delinquent tax bills to the Tax Claim Bureau. So they're also going to make an additional $8,415 from our taxpayers for delinquent bills. So for example, for East Huntington Township, they're going to make $33,868.42 on our delinquents, which is 1/10th of what I collect, yet they're going to make more than what I make. It doesn't necessarily seem equitable to me. We offer a lot of services to our taxpayers. We have a lot of elderly senior citizens. We ensure that not only them and all taxpayers are in the property tax rebate program, where everybody's getting over 220-some dollars per tax bill in Westmoreland County. We also ensure that we print out statements for them so that they can get the property tax relief anywhere from 200 to 650 dollars. So it may seem like we're getting a lot of money, but we are helping our taxpayers save money on their property tax bills, because a lot of our elderly senior citizens can't afford to pay their tax bills. So I guess I'm just basically trying to explain to you that even though our fees may seem large, you need to look at other people that you're paying money to and realize that you're actually getting a decent deal for what we're collecting, which is 7-plus million dollars. Diane? Yes?
Wouldn't it be fair to say also, to flip that around, that maybe Burkheimers and the, and the county and all those others are being well overpaid?
Well, I'll give you another, yes.
I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
You're comparing numbers.
Yes.
And numbers can be made to say a lot of things.
Right.
And, you know, I understand what you're saying is that you're, they're getting paid to do, they're being paid a lot more to do a lot less work than you are.
Correct.
And so therefore, that justifies your fees.
Yes.
Okay, and that may be true, but maybe we should look to see if they're overcharging us as well.
Well, first of all, with Burkheimer, we're mandated.
Yes, I do know that.
Now, the only problem, and luckily for us, we have Burkheimer, because I don't know if all the board members are aware of how Central Tax Bureau collapsed, and now Burkheimer has absorbed all of, most of all the counties that Burkheimer, or that Central Tax Bureau is collecting. And just, if you wanted to actually try and crunch some numbers to just, and again, we're mandated by Burkheimer, but Burkheimer for the school district, that, that Westmoreland County is going to collect in excess of $68 million at 2.5%. Now, again, we got a reduction. I guess my question would be, and I did a little research in the, in the Tax Collector's Manual, and I'm not a lawyer and I don't know all the ins and outs, but do you have to send all the collections, delinquent, to the Tax Claim Bureau? Because you're paying a lot of money to Westmoreland County Tax Claim Bureau to collect 1/10th of our tax money. You know, a lot of people are waiting for their income tax refunds, and you should know that, Ken, like, you know, when people want their money, that, I've, I've got a lot of phone calls from people that say, can I pay it in April when I get my refund check? I'm mandated by law to send all of my county, township, and school bills, delinquent, on December 31st. The other thing, and just to kind of defend, and even if you say, you know, Catherine, I, you know, I'm, I have the better bang for the buck, as far as what I'm collecting, I, I, and I'm sure Kathy does the same thing, I've gone after a number of taxpayers at the end of the year to try and get the money in. And this past year, I did it again. I collected over $100,000 from one particular parcel. I could have let that go delinquent. I could have said, fine, you know, I'm not happy with how I'm being treated, which I am, I'm very happy. I saved the school district $5,000 by collecting that money before it went delinquent to Tax Claim Bureau. So I guess the other thing is, is I don't know if we're bound by law to go to tax claim. It would be easier if we could collect that money either through April or June, and then obviously, you'd have to maybe pay us a little bit more because we're collecting delinquent, but not 5%. Okay.
And in my research, they told me that I am stuck with the Burkheimer and the delinquent stuff up there.
Burkheimer, you are.
There is nothing we can do about it. So we, as a board, we're not here to set salaries for now. I'm distressed about that, and you've talked about that, but do you really, really, really believe, Diane, that paying $31.91 for each tax bill in Everson is okay? Do you really believe that?
Have you actually calculated what it would cost, what you're collecting for the earned income tax, or what the fee is for the county?
Right. See, you keep talking about the other stuff, and this is where I'm having a problem. I want to talk about this stuff, because this is all we're allowed to regulate. We can't regulate all that other stuff. We can only do this. Answer my question, do you really think that's fair?
What, I think for what we do, I think our compensation is fair.
No, no, the $31.91.
I, I didn't, you just gave it to me now, so I really didn't get a chance to really look at it.
Diane, one of the things I'm asking for is I think that all of you should be paid the same. Is there something wrong with that?
I, I don't have a problem with the way the fee structure's set up.
I know, but I think it should be fair. I think, I think your work is worth as much as somebody who's getting, what, 1, 2, 3, 4, 400% more than you are.
I think what everybody gets is reasonable.
Can I ask you this, Ms. Feig?
Yes.
In some ways, you're talking about economies, too, of a small office and a larger office in terms of the number of accounts. Does, does reflect a little bit on what a tax collector does? I'm just, I'm up in Upper Tyrone, and I see the person in there for, I don't know, it's two days a week or whatever, so it's more than just doing mailings.
Right. People think that all a tax collector does is stamp the bill, and that's it. Catherine talked about that we get the bills mailed to us from the tax, or from the tax assessment office. We actually, in, in Westmoreland County, I don't know how Fayette County's bills come, all the bills are preferated? Is that what you call it, Kathy? We have to actually, I have to pull apart 4,300 tax bills. Actually, I just did it this week. I had my niece help me. She just graduated from college and needed a little bit of spending money, so out of my pocket, I'm paying her. She had to tear apart, because they're, like, where they're on the dot matrix printers, you know, where they, you have to put, line them up. So we have to pull all of the right side off of 4,300 bills, and we have to individually separate 4,300 bills. Now, for the school bills, we have to do the same thing, but I also have to stuff every single envelope with our privacy notice. So not only am I taking our bills and stuffing them in the envelope, I'm also stuffing in 4,300 privacy notices to notify our taxpayers about the privacy laws. So now the money's come in, I'm required to balance daily. I not only collect school, I collect county, township, county, township, school. I also collect county, township, school supplemental bills. Me being, East Huntington Township, we have growth continually. We are always having new additions added on to our properties. So generally, every month, I get, I call them blue, but other people call them green. I get blue supplemental bills that I now have to bill to the taxpayers. They're on a different billing cycle. They're not on the same cycle as all the other normal bills. So I have a daily spreadsheet that I keep track of, how much county money came in, how much township, each, each type of tax I have to separate. If it's a discount, I have to figure out how much face money came in that same day. Because when I report to Sue Diane how much money I deposited, I need to tell her, I collected X number of dollars, but in that money, this is how much discount we gave to the taxpayers, this is the face, and the difference is what I collected for the day. At the end of the month, I, as all four tax collectors, have to then compile all of this information and prepare reports for all three taxing authorities to tell you what money I collected, and when I collected the money, when I gave you the money. That's just the monthly thing. At the end of the year, I have to, we all have to, take every single unpaid tax bill, and we have to put their tax number, not their map number, it's a line number, and whether they're unpaid, and they all have to agree with what's on the ending balance of my DCED report that I send to the school, county, and township. That's just collecting. I've, for the past week, I'm just going to give you a simple example. I had somebody that was living in Cohen Mobile Home Park, and they were trying to sell their mobile home. Unfortunately, they never recorded this mobile home on their tax records, because these people wanted to buy the mobile home, and they kept calling me trying to figure out which mobile home it was. Every name they gave me, it was the wrong name. They gave me a mobile home, it was the wrong mobile home. What ended up that, the old mobile home has been there since 2006, and nobody ever told me nor the tax office to remove this mobile home from the records. So now we have a $5,500 delinquency that I'm trying to now work out with Tax Claim Bureau, because the new mobile home should have been on there, but the old mobile home wasn't removed. They come to me, or they come to Kathy, or they come to the other two. They don't go to tax assessment to get their problems resolved. Everybody comes to the tax collector. If they have a problem with their delinquency, they don't call the Tax Claim Bureau, they call the tax collector. We provide many copies of last, well, the phone will start ringing, people will come in, we'll provide copies of paid receipts for 2012, so people can get their property tax rebates. The list goes on. People think because we're the tax collector, we know everything, and so we try and understand everything to help all of our taxpaying people.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else, go ahead. Let's check and see if anyone else has a question here that you want to raise.
Seeing as the board sets the rates, do you have any idea, Diane, how it got so out of proportion?
No.
None at all?
And it doesn't matter.
What does, I'm just...
Well, I mean, but I think if you look at the percentage, the district is, we're, our percentage fee is not that large.
Well, when you're paying one person $8, and you're paying another one $32, I can't understand how it comes to that. And I'm not here to debate, you said you didn't know, so we'll just, we'll just move on.
We collected 5 million, and the other person really collected...
That's irrelevant. It's still the same amount of work, Josie. She's separating them and putting them in an envelope. Why does somebody, why did this board somewhere along the line approve somebody to get, pay $32 to do it, and somebody else $8 to do it? It has nothing to do with how much is collected. And also, Diane, wouldn't it be fair to say that we're setting the rates ahead of time? You and other ones may not be the tax collectors. Would that, would that be fair to say? I mean, now the people may want to run, and that's why we're setting these rates now.
It's mandated by law.
Right, right.
It's in the Tax Collector's Manual.
Tax collectors will know what they're making.
Every four years, you have to, have to do that.
So the people that are talking now, like yourself, may not actually be the tax, I'm sure you will be, but, you know...
But the job is not going to change.
Depending on how the election goes.
Right, but the job will not change.
Right.
And actually, the other thing, and back to what else we do, now that we're on the installment payments, we touch the bills three times, because now these people have to come in September, October, November, and if they don't pay on time, I have to penalize them. I don't like to do it, but I'm mandated by the rules that if you don't pay your bill on time, then I have to send out penalty notices.
Is that a small majority of the people?
We, I, I personally collect over 200 installment payments.
Out of thousands?
4,300.
Right, so, I mean, it's not a tremendous amount. And one of the things you also mentioned in here about, you know, getting, sending out copies, and, and I don't want to be taken the wrong way, it leads the board to be that you're paying for those, when in fact, anytime I call my tax collector, they tell me to send a postage, self-addressed stand envelope. So it's not necessarily money that you're spending, maybe time, but it's not necessarily money that you're spending to do some of the functions that you're talking about.
Well, I personally don't submit reimbursements for paper or toner or any of that, and actually, in the Tax Collector's Manual and the law, it says that the counties, township, and municipality are to reimburse us. So every piece of paper that I generate is coming out of my own pocket. So the postage, and the reason we tell them to send a postage-paid envelope is so you, the school district, county, and township, do not bear that cost. So it's up to you, if you want a bill, you have to pay for the postage for that receipt back, but I...
Diane, what is the difference between what you do to collect all taxes and what you do to... you do to collect spring taxes? Is there any difference?
Uh, the installment payments.
Yeah, but is there any difference in the process, the mailing, the...
Well, the school taxes, I have to insert this privacy notice. In the spring bills, I have to actually record county and township tax separately. So there's actually two taxes on the spring bill.
Okay, but this is what distresses me. The Everson taxpayer gets $31.91 for the school taxes. She's doing the same thing for $2.20 in the spring. Upper Tyrone, $14.78. They're doing the same thing for $2.20. Diane, you were getting $8.57 from us. You're doing the same thing for East Huntington, $2.96 a day. So when you describe these activities, you're doing the bill for $2.96, which you do for us at a different rate. And I'm saying, I don't think there's that much difference. There could be a little bit here and a little bit there.
There's a lot more money, so I'm, I'm putting a lot more money in the bank.
Diane, it's not something you can do with, when you, if I send you a bill for $10 or $10,000, it's on one piece of paper.
I don't get the same exact number of bills paid for school as I do county, township.
I asked, okay, I asked them, and that's what they told me. I can only guide by what they told me. 1401, 209, 392, 1235.
But there's no consistency between the two. What I get paid for county, township does not mean that I will necessarily get paid the same. Like, I, the same taxpayer may not pay me for the school bill, or I might have a school bill paid and the county, township not paid.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, you're doing that same service, Diane, for $2.96. And Everson and Upper Tyrone, they're doing it for $2.20, as opposed to $31.91 for $14.78. That's a big difference. You do it in total overall, by trying to put it all in one big bucket. We collect $17.24 for each purse, each bill, to collect our school taxes, and $3.24 for the spring taxes.
Thank you very much. You've made that point three times now.
Wait, wait, Levi, but this is, she's asking questions.
This is called discussion.
This is supposed to be a finance meeting where we're trying to get down to safety in money, and you keep interrupting. I don't think it's fair that you keep doing that, Levi.
I've heard this, the point being made three times now.
Yes, I've heard.
I'm sure you would.
Much of our discussion's been about Berchheimer stuff. And again, I did check into that, and they said our hands are tied. We really got stuck with the Berchheimer thing, and I agree, it's outrageous, it's absolutely outrageous. But the bottom line is, Diane, we have responsibility to the taxpayers in this whole district, all of them. And Mr. Miller sent for the local people, he issued it to the local people, but everyone who gets it, it was also a local person. So, you know, I can't, I can't dismiss all of them and just say, listen, Diane, I cannot live with inequity. I feel that it would be far unfair for us to set, uh, set, Everson, Upper Tyrone, and Fayette County, those people. I don't understand why we can't be fair and equitable to even the taxpayers based on, you're going to get that much money for however many bills you send, but it's just not right. It's not right. Like I said, you can do the best, you're the best, okay? And I did talk to Mrs. Fig, and she was very nice to me. I have to tell you, she was very, very thoughtful. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not dissing you as a person. I'm looking for equity, I'm looking for fairness. I just think that this thing is locked out of hand, because no one's ever looked at before. I do not diminish your role. I do not diminish your role. I think you do a wonderful job. You're doing it for 25%, like somebody else, and that's where I have to...
But have you called other school districts to see what they pay? Because we're actually paid less than what other school districts are paying.
I talked to them today, and when I told them, I was talking to a person at the courthouse, and he said, I said, "Big deal salary." He said, "No, ma'am, you're wrong." I said, "No, I have the salary." He said, "No, no, we pay percents. They all pay percents. They all pay percents." But what I'm telling you, this board has never looked at the concept of percents. They've never looked at anything. They simply took the, then stuffed it, no quarter recommended, slapped the increase on it, handed it to the citizens, and voted on it. And Diane, I, I, I'm not disrespectful to what you do. Please understand that. I think we need to get to a point of fairness and decency. When you're looking at these kinds of tax rates in one, one half, or what, 8% of our school district, and then the dramatic difference in the second, or the rest of the state, I can't, I can't live with that. I don't think that's fair to our taxpayers. I don't think it's fair to you.
If, if you look at the tax collector's manual, though, and you want to talk percentages, the tax collector manual says that you can pay 5%.
Yes, you can.
County, East Huntington Township, I don't know what, or Scottsdale's come out, but I know, I think Everson Borough and Upper Tyrone pay 5%. So, I, so...
Well, Fayette County, great information.
Was, their, their county pays per bill, but the municipalities pay 5%.
Okay, so what I also discovered is you, you like many salaries. You don't just get this one, you get, you get municipal, you get this. When I talked to the courthouse today, she said she writes you out commission checks. She called to talk about the social security thing, and that was legislated from the bench, so that was taken care of.
But they're not commission checks, they're paychecks. From the courthouse.
I can only go by what you said.
No, I get a paycheck from the courthouse.
Ms. Fig, thank you very much for coming. Thank you for responding to the questions. And I'm going to call the question on the motion, on the floor. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
I think, before I make my vote, I think we ought to all take a look at this, sit down and discuss it. There's money to be saved. There's a real inequity here between what we're paying some and others. The taxpayer, once again, seems like they're getting the short end of the stick. So I'm asking everyone that we not vote this right now.
Take that as a no vote. Voting now?
Question on the question, um, to, to Mr. Alt. Therefore, it's necessary to set the tax collector's salaries prior to February 1st.
My mistake, 15, 15 is correct.
15, yes, we have two more minutes.
Let's continue with the voting.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
The motion is to give an increase in the, to adopt the salary schedule handed out by Mr. Porter in the administration. Is that the motion?
The motion is on the floor.
The motion's on the agenda.
It's in front of you. Is it a yes or a no?
It's unbelievable. This is unbelievable that you, this is school, this is...
Okay, it's a no vote.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes 7-2. Comment? Sure. Once again, I see the board is willing to stick it to the taxpayer. I think it's a disclose. Thank you.
I would like to say something, if I could.
Sure.
Um, after what we just heard tonight, and we know how much work that all the tax collectors do, the 2%, you're, you're talking about $600. We're going to take a year away, a year, a year freeze, and then their, their 2% increase for Diane, as an example, is $600 a year. So it's, it's a little bit of something. It's a, it's a daily living increase, a yearly increase. It's not a major, major thing that we're looking at.
It's not that important that we're looking at.
For the amount of $7 billion.
Just a minute, allow her to finish her, and then we're going to...
I'm just saying, that's why I voted yes. I'm not here to hurt the taxpayer at all.
But what we should be looking at, it's, it's not about the $600, like Levi would say, "That's just chump change," or whatever. But the, the problem is, is how this has gotten out of control. We need to set standard rates for all of them. One should be paid $32, while the other one is paid 8. We, it's our responsibility to, plus the fact that in other places, they're getting paid $2 to do this. Now, I'm not saying that's fair either, but we've got to find a happy meeting without just voting yes, yes, yes all the time to these motions.
Well, $10,000 to Everson is not a lot of, it's not a, hardly a salary at all to collect what she's collecting.
That's their choice.
We just voted to pay $8.54, $14.45, $31.94, and $14.78 for each tax bill. We just voted for...
Thank you very much. If somebody, uh, I've, uh, we've heard from that corner. If you want to say something yet, go ahead.
I just have one last statement of, for the last year, I keep hearing that the other seven people don't care. Just because we don't see the same way you do, doesn't mean we don't care. We do care.
Okay. Well, if you did care, you wouldn't keep putting the tax burden on, on the taxpayer.
I would like to say on, for myself, to Ms. Fig and to the three other taxpayers, pass it on to them, a great appreciation for what you do in what looks to me as very moderate rates compared to what other taxpayers do in the county, and I thank you very much.
Thank you for coming this evening as well. We appreciate your being able to answer some questions for us.
Okay, tonight, we have one more.
An item that I need to walk on, it came to us late, and that is the district course. Two of our high school students, Sam Bayor and Ty Kinter, were selected to participate in PA District Court, PMEA District Course Festival on Wednesday, February 26th through, February 6th and February 8th at Quaker Valley High School. Mrs. Zamperini and Mr. Swink calculated the cost and determined that, considering a one hour and 20-minute drive and, and the cost of getting the transportation back and forth, the most economical thing to do is to have those students stay there overnight as opposed to traveling back and forth. So we would entertain a motion that we approve an overnight trip for Sam Bayor and Ty Kinter to participate in the PMEA District Course Festival, March 6th through March 8th, which would include transportation to and from the festival, and room charge for the two boys and for their sponsor, Mrs. Zamperini, at a cost of $2.96, $40 in room charge. Mrs. Zamperini would be driving a school van, so we would not be paying an additional driver or rooms, a van.
Okay, good. Did I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Kaufman, it's a motion.
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Beistel. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, and that passes 9-0. Okay, this meeting was called. If citizens' comments, then we'll adjourn to our budget. Are there any citizens' comments? Hearing none?
I have two items I would like to bring up.
Intended to...
I have two items I would like to bring up. Mr. Stiber's report.
Just, could I just, uh...
Yeah, go ahead.
This special meeting was called for this, for the budget meeting.
I'm still on this one.
Are you on, what, are you on tax collecting?
This.
No, I haven't, I will hear no further.
This meeting, this meeting. I'm still on this meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Stiber's report, if you read it, 14 months ago, he stated that our school district does not have a fraud policy. We don't have a policy committee, but I would like to bring up the fact that he recommended 14 months ago that we have one. To the best of my knowledge, we don't. Maybe you knew and I don't know about it, but that's what it says in his report. The second question I got is...
Thank you.
Do we have to pay PASBO for their search for a business manager?
Yes.
How much?
$5,000.
$5,000. I didn't know that.
Pardon me?
I didn't know that before.
Why wasn't that disclosed? Okay.
Because I did not know that. When we talked about it, I knew PASBO would be less expensive than a private company, which wanted 35% of the first-year salary, but I, I didn't have that figure at the time.
That's all fine and dandy, but if Dr. Feig wouldn't have asked, public wouldn't know that we spent another $5,000 of their money.
Diane, I've discussed home and core standards before, and I'm asking you to consider the information in this handout that I have. It's the most critical reason we're here, the education of our children.
Very good. We're going to, gonna have a call for adjournment. This meeting was really to discuss budget and to hear from us regarding budget, and our chair, Josie Coslin, will leave, so could I hear a, a motion to adjourn to, and that comes from Miss Love.
Second.
Second by Miss Rhodes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that passes. We adjourn to a budget meeting, and we go to this floor.
Well, it's not, because this is a public meeting, so we'll be here a while, and you should probably stay.
It's public.
I thought we were adjourned to...
No, we're adjourned to a budget discussion meeting.
At this time, we'll resume with the preliminary budget for 2013. Dr. Loenore is going to start us off.
We did compile this little bit of information to give you some background on our budget The first sheet that I'm passing around has to do with our revenue sources, and I know in the budget, it does renumerate it for you in line item. I put them into a pie graph for you. I thought that might give you a little bit better picture of where our revenues are coming from. And I have some other documents that I'll be passing out as we move forward here, that will talk about our expenditures as well. So on this pie chart, you can see that 56% of our revenues come from the state. Our local real estate revenues amount to about 29% of our revenues, and other local revenues, which are some of the things that Mrs. Fig discussed, earned income tax and things of that nature, provide about 9% of our revenues. 3% come from revenue, and 3%, as we have the budget planned as it now stands, would be a transfer from the fund balance. So that's just kind of a visual for you in terms of where the revenues come from. The next thing that I have for you deals with expenditures, and I'll wait till these are in your hands before I start to talk about that. All right, as you can see, this is projected expenditures by function for the 1314 budget. And again, this is as of the first budget that was done back on January 3rd, so obviously, this may be revised a little bit, but as you can see, 41% of our expenditures are dedicated to regular educational programs, with another 13% in the green being devoted to special programs, mostly our special education. In the orange, 8% would be to operation and maintenance of the physical plant, and that would include the custodians. And as you can see going around, I just kind of enumerated all of those things, ranging from debt service to athletics and all the way down. So that, that's just kind of a picture of, of where we are in terms of our function. And the last sheet I have for you is again, another, another pie chart. I was in pie chart heaven today, I guess. And this is just another visual of how our expenditures are broken down. What we have here, these are broken down by object, and as you can see, in the blue and the dark... blue and the dark red salaries and benefits, uh, amount to, um, 43, 60, about 64% of our budget, um, and then everything else, uh, comprises, uh, a much, uh, much less of the budget. Um, that would include maintenance, repairs, transportation, um, debt service, and I apologize for my typo there, um, and, and some, uh, four hundred thousand dollars in monetary reserve. So that just kind of gives you, uh, just a kind of three little charts that, um, tell you, uh, you know, the proportions, I guess, in terms of, uh, of how your money comes in and, and how it's spent. And the last thing I have for you, um, Mr. Mackley, Dr. Scott, and I sat down yesterday, uh, and spent some time together, um, and we tried to do a little bit of tweaking of the initial budget. And again, this was our, uh, our first, uh, our first stab at doing any tweaking, um, of this budget. Which is the one that was distributed to you folks, um, several weeks ago. One of the things that we were able to do, um, based on everything we're hearing out of Harrisburg, um, when the budget was originally put together, uh, 146,000 revenue was taken out, but for everything we're hearing, um, that money will be, uh, replaced. That's the portion of the Accountability Block Grant that has been, been replaced, um, for the last two budgets Governor Corbett has presented, and we're expecting that to come back. So we did add that back in on the revenue side, and then on the expense side, um, the, the budget was written with $7,000 for Camp Curtain Call. That was, um, a program that we tried to do with some Scottsdale Bank and Trust money, um, but we found out that that was not an allowable program, um, under the, uh, under the, um, EITC grant, so, um, that, that money was taken out. We eliminated $53,000, uh, for the CWCTC renovation, um, since that project is going to be postponed for, um, a good period of time, by the way it looks, so we were able to take that out. Uh, we were able to reduce our after-school tutoring expenditure, uh, from the general fund portion by 17,400, and we eliminated e-Academy training for teachers for the forthcoming year, and we have a cadre of teachers trained, and we thought it might be time to just regroup and, um, get some of those practitioners, um, up and running before we, uh, train more teachers. So that was a $17,000 savings in the budget. Um, we've been talking about relocating the administration building, which would, uh, result in a significant, uh, utility, uh, savings as well as, uh, savings on some copier machine leases, so we estimated that savings to be at a little over 15,000. When our bus contract was renewed, it was renewed, um, at a lesser rate than we had been paying. Uh, that was a $43,000 savings that was not reflected in the first, um, draft that you received, and, um, the reduction in debt service due to refinancing the bond, uh, was not in there either. Uh, that's another $72,000, um, for a total adjustment, again, just in, in the one afternoon that we spent together, of about $371,000. Um, so our shortfall at this juncture, rather than being 1.6 million dollars, um, looks to be about 1.25 million dollars, and obviously we'll continue to work on that, but we would certainly welcome, um, some direction and input from the folks around this table. So as, uh, as you provide that input, uh, Dr. Scott and Mr. Mackley and I will be taking notes and, um, comparing our, our notes, uh, as we move forward and, um, try to get this budget just as close to balance as we can.
Um, I guess I'm concerned about eliminating the CWCTC renovation, um, maybe not all of it, but as we always say, plan for the future, and we know that is going to take effect. I, I don't know if this is time to talk about this or not, but we met last night at the VOTEC meeting, and the goal is to start the process over again. Hopefully next year, it will take, we're gonna, they're gonna go get a, um, project manager, break the specs, get more bids, start the whole project. Hopefully we'll vote on it in June, um, but, you know, to, we're always saying, plan for the future, plan for the future. I don't know if we can save for a rainy day and maybe make half of it, or, I mean, I don't know. That's up to you. It's just something to think about. It's gonna happen. It's probably gonna happen, maybe like with 14, 15, but...
Right, right.
But, I mean, I don't know if you can save for a rainy day, or if you have to, to plan, plan ahead.
First payment was originally gonna be in 14, 15, billed during this year's...
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, I just mentioned to, uh, Mrs. Kaufman, uh, the first, uh, payment under the original CWCTC plan, um, was to come out of the 14, 15 budget, uh, but when this draft was written, um, it was actually put into this year's budget.
Question on page 1 of 1, I guess?
Are you in the...
In the, in the preliminary budget. I was, I'm not sure what the, probably halfway down the page, medical and dental service, $40,000. I don't know who that's going to, like, what, who's that for, or what's that? It's like came out of nowhere. I don't know where it's, who it's for.
Bill, 7330, function medical and dental service.
That's the revenue coming back from the state as a reimbursement for the expenditures that you do make for medical and dental services.
Oh, our, our nursing?
Yeah, 73, yeah, that's exactly.
At, at $40,000, we have, I can't even write. We, we receive reimbursement for health services we provide to students, so, so that, that's a revenue that's used every year. I did bring my manual of accounts here, but Mr. Mackley hasn't memorized, so...
And then on page, uh, page 1 of 21, where it says SPC salary dash ABG, nothing was budgeted for 1213, and then it goes to 135,000. I didn't know what the ABG stood for.
Uh, that, that's Accountability Block Grant, and some of our, uh, kindergarten teachers are paid, um, out of Accountability Block Grant money. Um, I believe in 1213, uh, that was just lumped into overall salaries, because as you can see, there was 879, 362 budgeted for overall salaries in the line right above that, um, but it was just broken out in, into, uh, the funding stream. So the 879 was reduced to 742, and that's why the 135 is coming out of that Accountability Block Grant money.
As far as supplies and, and things like that, we're getting the cheapest and things as, as we are, but there's no way to cut corners on it. I mean, I know we go through the IU to get our paper and our fuel and all that, but...
And we've also asked our t- our principals to look at their building level budgets and reduce some of their supply costs wherever they can. That, that would not be reflected in that preliminary, uh, round of cuts that we gave you.
Is there, um, program, like this one year we bought science, one year we bought English textbooks, is that, is there anything in here for that?
No, we, we've already, that was taken out.
That's taken out.
As the budget was being built. The only thing that's in here in terms of textbooks and periodicals, that's on page 3 of 21, um, about a third of the way down the page, um, under the 640 category, um, those would be, uh, replacement textbooks for books that, uh, are no longer serviceable, um, or in the event that we have, um, additional students that we'd, you know, would have to purchase an extra book or two for, and then, um, a lot of the, uh, uh, books in that category are the consumable books that are used in the primary and elementary grades that are actually the, the workbooks that the students actually write in, which is why the, uh, the one number's, uh, much higher than the rest.
Anybody else have any questions?
Are you mainly on the expenditures on this fi- at this point?
I'm sorry, Mr. Miller?
Are you mainly on the expenditures at this point?
Uh, we could be on either, on either side.
Well, okay, I had several, several ideas that I have here. One is to, uh, to look at any retirements very closely, uh, in regards to filling, uh, and this is, this is just looking in the next few years, but this year, if there is any, if there are any, and that is, uh, I, uh, the degree to which it seems to me the, 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 the kind of mood and the way our funding is going these days is, is a, is a very kind of, what I would call a no-frills education, a kind of the testing of very core math, uh, and, and English and science. So just, uh, to constantly keep looking when there are retirements, um, can, can we, uh, can we, uh, is this, is this, uh, is this filling a core position and, uh, in a core position, and are there ways that we could gain some, uh, some staff, uh, some staff, savings? Also related to retirement, um, whenever a class goes out, we've done it, uh, at least twice in the past, uh, what is it, five, six years, uh, that's often been a savings to us in the neighborhood of a, a half a million, uh, dollars, and that, that really, uh, when it, uh, brings in a younger staff, it, uh, nothing to, to denigrate any of the senior teachers, but, uh, I would, I would like to see us at least consider, uh, if there is the possibility of a, uh, of a class, that, that we would, uh, that we would offer, um, an early retirement incentive and, uh, and at least take a look at that, and I would see that as a, as a, uh, figure it either way, a reduction in expenditure or as a, uh, an increase in revenue. A third one, just kind of to consider, um, I think we always do, uh, do things based on everything, based on sort of measuring the return on resources that we have. We've really tried to keep class size, you know, uh, as best we can, as early grades, 18, 20, uh, but I know in at least some states, Midwestern, some of our neighboring states, uh, teachers where the, that has moved up to 22, 24, 25, 26, uh, larger class. I know this is, uh, I, uh, it's not ideal, and I'm not, I don't have a magic number here that I'm pushing, but I, I, I think, I, I would, I would hope you would, you would look at that as we, uh, as we fill positions of, um, whether we may be able to, uh, to, uh, still have the kind of excellent education which we, which we do have, and, uh, and, and, and maybe those, uh, adjust those numbers if, uh, that, I, I would hope that wouldn't, you know, none of us are looking for that, but that... Maybe the last, this is just sort of to a, uh, this is probably, uh, the kind of idea that rejected out of hand, but, uh, nonetheless, um, I, I always do a, and I don't know whether, how much of a savings this, this would be, maybe none, but I always do a kind of a, a knee-jerk, uh, against my, my common sense, when the state does not want us to lose any, in, in high school especially. But my own feeling, my own experience has been, if somebody has learned to read and write, you have a good work ethic, and you're drug-free, you're much better off out there working, and there are jobs, than you are in school where you don't want to be. Uh, and so, not to try to just keep everybody in school, if somebody wants to take a walk, take a walk, and if you, if you decide you want to graduate, then you have always GEDs or come back, but I don't know. I don't know whether that be a savings or not. I know we're downgraded for that, whenever kids do not graduate, uh, as far as the, the way the state looks at it. It just is a personal experience. I come from, I grew up in a county where half the kids have an eighth grade education. You know what the unemployment is in that county? It's Holmes County, Ohio, 2.5%. And that stays like that. They learn to read and to write, and they learn a good work ethic from their, from their culture and from their homes and families. Now, we have a good work ethic in this community, and I love it. Uh, it's, it's strong here, but, and sometimes it goes against the grain to, to me, the way we try to keep kids in school, let them go out and get some fresh air, as long as they work and, and try to stay drug-free, and I know the statistics go against me on this nationwide, so I'm not, that, that's probably just thrown in there, so, uh, a few, few thoughts.
We can penalize them. We need for the graduation.
Yeah, we actually do. I, I, I know, but that's...
Yeah, we do.
Okay, but I hope that doesn't diminish, uh, so, so there, there are just a few suggestions.
Remind me again with the community services, um, on 3,300. The number 3,300, community service, $88,000, on the front page.
All right. What's the, uh...
3,300.
Those are your crossing guards?
Those are, yeah, crossing guards, your 707 events.
Who are your community service personnel?
Down in the Scottsdale Borough and things down there.
With crossing guards in, um, Scottdale and in Everson, uh, split across the municipality, and then, then also 707 events, the, the part of those, the district courses.
Well, we won't know until June if there's gonna be any retirements. Well, we know, start date in April or something, you have to tell us, the teachers.
Um, we would like to have as early as possible. There's nothing in the contract that indicates, um, when they have to announce. In the past, uh, when we have had incentive packages, um, we have put a, a deadline with a, generally more trade.
Are we done with some of the incentives?
Yes.
That bit? So are we saving on that?
Yes.
What did you say?
Yes, there are. There was a, there was a, to answer your question, Mrs. Kaufman, uh, in regular education teachers, uh, there was a $244,000 decrease, um, in, uh, retirement incentive payments in 2012, 13, and 13, 14. So some of those, uh, plans did sunset.
And the increase is, is in here already?
Yes. 16.5%.
16.93, which is a 36% increase.
We pay half of that. Is that what I remember?
You get reimbursed for half.
Half.
Currently. See what the Governor comes up with. See what the governor comes up with.
You might get more.
It would be nice to get more.
And the athletics again is same as last year, we're probably saving us some monies from getting, you know, the media grades, the Puckmark trade as far as coaches, shirts and things with that.
Yeah, he actually, he actually put this on, on a cycle where he was not buying as frequently as he wants to be.
So he still needs that amount of money.
Yeah, one of, one of the things we're doing, Mrs. Kaufman, and, um, we obviously haven't had time to go through all twenty-one pages of this. But Mr. Mackamy is, um, looking at previous year's actual expenditures, um, rather than budgeted expenditures. So what we're trying to do is, um, budget more closely to what our actual expenditures have been as opposed to what our budgets have been. And then also looking at those expenditures and saying, what were those expenditures that we still need to be making? Or is that something we can reduce? So you'll be getting updates from us as, as this process goes on. One of the things we'll be looking at, for example, is our cyber school division. And we're expecting that that might drop a little bit because we have a software on the learning academy, which we can deliver in a much more cost-effective way. So we're hoping that that will drops considerably.
That's the one on page two, like the hundred-and-sixty thousand, the three forty.
Yes.
Where is that?
It's on page two, the bottom of the page.
There's two of those, that four it is, that number of practices need forty-five students.
Yeah, one is elementary, one is secondary.
So about a half a million.
Dr. Feig, to answer your earlier question, uh, in terms of number of students in cyber charters, um, we budgeted for sixty-five.
The copiers and things, the leases that, that all the schools have, is that something that could be looked into? I mean, other companies or, you know, if that's nickel diamond stuff, but, I mean, you lease those, we all know.
Yeah, well, when, when those leases expire, we, we do look at, um, competitive, you know, proposals for this. Um, and again, by moving, uh, if we decide we're moving a ministry, which I hope we do, um, we're planning to eliminate at least one Xerox lease.
How much does that usually?
If you look on page two of twenty-one, depending on which building it's in and, and what the, uh, what the usage on it is, uh, can range, uh, anywhere from eight thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Is that included paper? No, could you buy it or anything?
No, the twenty-five thousand's for more than one machine, because those are, those are, um, broken out by buildings.
I guess there's no extra expense when it breaks down or anything like that.
Right, right.
That's the eventual leasing.
Right. We pay for some repairs and some we do not. If it's, uh, normal wear and tear, uh, we do not pay. If there, uh, if it's not normal wear and tear, then there's, there's a charge. Most of our repairs are covered by the lease. Other questions or directions for us as we move forward during this process?
On the revenue side, I'd have two. One on the, on the state level that we, we do whatever we can to communicate to our legislators, to the governor, that, uh, flat funding of, um, education is unsatisfactory uh, for the next two years. Especially, is that true for a, for a district such as ours, uh, which over half of our funding comes from the state? Uh, we have a high, we have a high number of, uh, of students that get, uh, assistance in, in lunches. Uh, and that is a way of trying to provide quality education. I, I think the, the governor is, is, is simply irresponsible, uh, toward public education in the, at the, for the current funding levels and what I've heard is being projected for the next year. And I just look back at what, uh, what it has been in some years past. And often we could look forward to between four-hundred thousand, five-hundred thousand increase in basic education. And if you think of, of the size faculty that we have, a good faculty, uh, that is, uh, about two-thirds of that is needed just to give a basic, uh, two to three percent increase in salaries. So, so that is there. I, I'd like to think, you know, I, I noticed now the privatization of the, um, state stores, that there's an opening there if that goes through, of holding, sort of, out of a carrot, that, uh, that, that some of that would go to education. If that's the governor's way of saying, uh, we're, we're, uh, we're looking at it and we'll review it between now and June, I, I really hope so. So that's, that's on a, just on a, on a, on a state level.
The issue with the, uh, the sale of the state stores and the liquor licenses to fund education. I believe the governor is predicting that that would, uh, net about a billion dollars statewide and he would fund, uh, all or part of that used for education funding over four years. That has the same problem that the RRA funding had, uh, at the end of four years. When districts have begun to count on this money and use this money to cover returning expenses four years from now when it's gone, then, then we find ourselves in worse shape than we currently are. Because unfortunately, in the times that we're in, um, that money has to be used to supplant as opposed to supplement. So when it runs out, we find ourselves with even, even deeper deficits and, and problems than we currently have right now.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You gave us a projected revenue pie chart and it says that we get fifty-six percent of our money in state revenue. If our aid ratio is sixty-four point two percent, how do we get fifty-six percent of our revenue if we get sixty percent if it's already gone?
Mr. Mackamy, perhaps you can answer that question better than I, in terms of aid ratio versus, uh, percentage of.
The aid ratio is built by what the property value and the income of the community. It has no correlation to how the state funds you because, as you know, in the past couple of years, there has been no correlation to basic education funding. Everything has been flat. There has been no increases by, even though your aid ratio has gone up, you have not seen an increase in your basic education subsidies. Nor have you seen an increase in special education subsidy, transportation subsidy, or any of the other basic state subsidies. So as a result, while you may be getting poorer as a community, it's not, the state is not ponying up any additional resources and it's putting more of the burden back on the local side to come up to fund education.
So is our, is our aid ratio fifty-six percent?
No, your aid ratio is approximately sixty-five percent.
Yeah, sixty-four and a half, but it says here fifty-six percent of our money comes from the state.
Comes from the state, but that doesn't have any correlation with what your aid ratio is because they don't fund it by your economic.
So the aid ratio is meaningless?
It, it's not meaningless, it's one of the factors that they use in certain of the formulas, more in the federal side and in certain of your reimbursements for other expenditures. But it doesn't have any correlation to how they fund basic or special education.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't understand it, I was going to take any more time with me, but I don't get it.
You know, it'd be a small amount, but compared to our budget, but over the years you've been talking, looking into the paperless board meetings and documents and stuff, uh, how much would that, do you know that IU does that, does it count?
I don't know the exact figure, Mike, we can figure that out and let you know.
Do you calculate the cost of twelve five-hundred-dollar iPads first as first? And then you take your savings.
Yeah, you're exactly right there, there is an initial cost to that.
Paper's cheap, my comparison, my law of paper for five-hundred dollars.
One of the things that we did learn, uh, in, in talking to some people about this, there are cheaper, uh, versions out there of readers, you know, versus the iPad. But still, um, even if you're looking at a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar machine, um, you know, but, but it's worth a look, so we can certainly cost that out and figure out about how much paper we're using, you know, wear and tear on the copiers and so on.
We also have the time that the guys deliver and the materials to every place. Truly, things like that, or mailing materials, or things. Are there old laptops around that aren't being used by the district, that are obsolete?
No. No, if they're, if they're obsolete for use by the district, their processors aren't fast enough and the memory is not sufficient, that you'll be able to run a board doc program. Or when those are run on, on the little tablet computers.
I'd, I'd note one other one in regards on the revenue side. I'm, I'm a firm believer that, that we are, are better to do moderate increases in what we ask for the local taxpayer to do rather than to make big jumps. We did that last year and it brought about an additional hundred-and-eighty thousand, as I understand it, into the, into the budget. I think we should seriously consider it again this year. Uh, and, and, and simply given the times and also given the fact that we had not had any tax increases for, I think it was five or six years at least. That, uh, correct me what, what the number is, my, in my head, I think that costs the average taxpayer in our district about twenty, uh, twenty dollars a year.
I would have to check that number.
Okay, and I maybe, I mean, I get the, get the number. But I think that's a very moderate, uh, increase, depending on the size of the properties, it's more or less, of course. But it is, it is a part of the, the cost of, uh, of living. And, uh, so just to say, I think that's, I, I would hope as a board, we would consider that again this year.
Give any words of wisdom for us, Bill, this is your first. Just kind of take a look at anything, any suggestions, uh, that you've seen right off the bat other than what you gave us here was good?
I think that we will continue meeting between now and when you adopt your budget to try to pare down some of the expenses and also look for avenues to increase the revenues. So that when it comes time to adopt your budget, you will be a lot closer than, than you are right now. And we've asked the buildings to, to basically come to the, with their best estimate as well, so we'll see what that looks like.
Again, this is a small number, but I was at a basketball game and someone came up to me at the game and asked whatever happened with looking into doing advertising at the sports venues of the gymnasium, the ballfields and things like that. I think we were looking at that, we never heard any more.
Yeah, we'll follow, Mr. Smith on that. And again, at the county level, um, you know, there have been conversations about, um, going so far as advertising school buses. Mr. Potonic had some, had some concerns from a, uh, first amendment standpoint in terms of, you know, how, how you limit what you're advertising. So we've kind of slowed down on that until we can get some of those questions resolved.
Do we want to make a date for another meeting? Sometime in, I don't know, the end of February or March? Or we meet again, our normal meetings are next Thursday and the following.
Seven and fourteen.
Seven and fourteen. Do you feel it's necessary to have one again in February, is that too soon to give you guys time to look and see?
It gives us months of waiting.
I think realistically, you need to see what the governor is proposing in his budget before we even start making any roads into what we're looking for on our side. The governor will come out the beginning of February with his preliminary, but we don't see what that looks like as a school district until early April. So I think, you know, you would be putting the cart before the horse if you try to make all your decisions without knowing what the state is looking for on their side. As we know that they are a very large portion of what funds yours. So if there's any change on their funding side, you want to see that before you make any decisions on your side. So while we will look at the expenditure side, I think you would be prudent to wait until they have made their announcements as to how they plan to make any changes on this state level.
Hopefully by then we would kind of have an idea of teachers, if anybody's going to decide to retire, maybe we'd know by April.
That would be preferable, yes.
Any other comments? No? Do you need to, before we, after we make an adjournment for this meeting, do you need to have the motion to go to executive session for some of the state?
Uh, it's tax litigation with, uh, non-put, I'm sorry, track-up to associates, uh, tax assessment.
No more comments on the budget? State may have a motion to adjourn from second session. Second.
Check.
All savings settled. Present executive session. Present to executive session.